Welcome everyone to the Center at West Park's District Six City Council Candidates Forum. I'm Derek McQueen. I'm African American. My pronouns are he/him and his. I am wearing a yellow shirt, a blue blazer, and a blue tie. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Center at West Park. In 2017, a team of community leaders and arts professionals established the center as a not-for-profit performing arts center. We are dedicated to provide programming that encourages community engagement, supports the performing arts, and the preservation of our historic landmark West Park Church building. Our mission is to be a vibrant cultural hub that transcends barriers facing our community. We are pleased to present today's program, which will be moderated by our dear friend and community activist Kay Carpen. Kay is a man of many talents. Not only is Kay Senior Pastor at St. Paul's and St. Andrew's United Methodist Church here on West 86th Street, but also he is an active member of our Upper West Side Community, co-chairing Community Board Seven's Preservation Committee. I present to you Kay Carpen. Kay?
Thank you, Derek. My pronouns are he/him/his. I am a cisgender white male. I am wearing a blue shirt. I'm very glad to be here tonight. The Center at West Park is in concert with our cosponsors. That's the West Eighties Neighborhood Association, the Historic District Council, West End Preservation Society, and Landmark West is pleased to present our District Six City Council Candidates Forum. Today's program focuses on the role of preservation in our community. We'll address issues that confront District Six with an emphasis on the adaptive reuse of landmarked properties, aid to homeowners of historic properties, and the future of the Upper West Side as part of New York City's living history. First, allow me to introduce our candidates: Gail Brewer, Maria Danzillo, Daniel Gold, Sarah Lynn, Jeffrey Omura, and Zach Weiner. They'll be asked a series of questions submitted by our District Six community. The candidates' position statements will be posted on our cosponsors' website for your review. Our first question goes to Sarah Lynn. Sarah, please give a brief description of yourself for our vision impaired viewers, and then tell us what priority you place on landmark preservation in District Six. Please address the issue of upzoning's impact on creating more luxury units than affordable housing and the subsequent loss of our historic district sense of place and streetscape in 92nd.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Sarah Lynn. My pronouns are she/her. I am a white woman with long brown hair and wearing a white blouse. Yeah, this is a great question. I think it's very important. I shared in last week's preservation forum that my son came home from school the other day talking about how they had talked about in school the fact that it was a historic district and how special that was. And I do think it's very special, and that's what makes the Upper West Side such a wonderful place to live, and we have to protect that. That said, I also believe that affordable housing is the most critical issue facing our city and the most fundamental, you know, foundation of a good life for anyone. And we must ensure that all New Yorkers have access to housing that they can afford that's permanent and stable. I think that the reason why upzonings often haven't worked in the past is because de Blasio has focused on low-income communities and low-income communities of color often. It leads to gentrification and displacement and doesn't build affordable housing. So I believe that we do need to build more housing in this city. In general, over the last 50 years, we've built much less housing per capita than other cities, and we've seen populations growing in places like Austin, Houston, Milwaukee, places where they're building housing. We're losing population here because our housing is so expensive. That said, it's a citywide problem, and all over the city, we need to create more housing. I believe every neighborhood has to do their part, which is why I've put forth a proposal on my website. I encourage you to check it out, sarahlynn.nyc, that identifies areas in the district, mostly in the kind of southwest corner of the district where right now they're building luxury buildings. I believe we could rezone for affordability requirements and build the housing we need, not the luxury condos we don't. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Sarah. David Gold, please give a brief description of yourself for our vision impaired viewers, and then tell us how you would prioritize this issue.
Hi, I'm David Gold. My pronouns are he/him/his. I'm wearing blue. I have brown eyes, and some of my hair is still brown also. I am not against upzoning in every circumstance. I think it's something that we need to treat on a case-by-case basis. But I don't believe it should be the primary means of making housing affordable. The best and most efficient method to make housing affordable for all New Yorkers, in my view, is through a massive commitment of cash credits and vouchers to help rent burden New Yorkers pay the rent or become homeowners. I think we can pay for that through property tax reform and by taxing the new development of very expensive homes and gradually other very expensive homes with protections in place for current homeowners who aren't themselves very wealthy. And then every penny of the newly generated revenue should be allocated in advance to assist rent burden New Yorkers in rental and ownership of affordable homes. And then I believe that instead of building our legislation around rough projections, the legislation should include targets so that property taxes on the extremely wealthy gradually rise when necessary based on a formula until New Yorkers can afford to live in New York. And by taking this more direct approach to solving the rent burden, I believe we can separate the question of affordable housing from the question of upzoning. It doesn't mean that we won't choose to increase the housing supply, but we won't be pitting the need for affordable housing against the goal of preservation. And, you know, after all, the benefit of historic and aesthetic preservation is for everybody. It's not just for people who are wealthy. It's for people who also need help paying the rent.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, David. Let's bring Gail Brewer into the conversation. And Gail, please give a brief description of yourself for our vision impaired viewers, and tell us how you plan to balance the need for affordable housing versus the preservation of historic properties. Are these goals mutually exclusive, or is there a solution?
I am Gail Brewer. I am she/her/hers, and I have on a blue jacket and a blue blouse, and I have brown hair, and I'm a white woman, and this is a very good question. I would just want to point out that in terms of landmarks, how important it is that we are talking about West Park Presbyterian Church, which is where I, in the city council, managed to get a landmark. And to the credit of the artists and the religious and those who care about the arts, it's now the center, and hopefully will become owned by the center and will become a center of the art. So that's a really great landmarks slash preservation slash repurpose. And I just want to congratulate everyone who's part of it. It wasn't easy to get it landmarked, but now that it is, you've done a good job. This issue of affordable housing, there's so many aspects to it. I would say first, and we've done a report about this in the Borough President's Office after a year of discussing it, we've got to look at the faith base, and certainly Kay, you know this better than others. You've done a great job at St. Paul and St. Andrew in terms of repurposing, at least in the basement. But the faith base, we have a church right now on 92nd and Amsterdam that the congregation wants to tear down and build high rises so that they can pay for the mission. So we have to figure out how we can help the faith base to make, want to change the structure. It's got to include affordable housing. Second, this MI8 that the mayor came up with is just a pathetic amount of affordable. It only includes 25%. If we're going to build new buildings, and I know that we're going to, it has to be a much higher percentage. We're always facing this takings issue, which lawyers on the call know better about than I do, where there are folks who say if you increase a percentage, you will not be able to fight the takings issue in court. Got to deal with that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Gail. Jeffrey Omura, please give a brief description of yourself for our vision impaired viewers, and then please tell us what is your plan to balance this need?
Sure. First off, thank you so much for having us. I've enjoyed seeing live arts performances at the Center at West Park over the years, and I look forward to doing that as soon as it restarts. So we've got to do both. The Upper West Side is home to some of the most beautiful buildings in the entire city, and I want to make sure we keep it that way. But we also have an extraordinary need for a massive expansion of affordable housing. So my plan focuses on how we build housing throughout the five boroughs to bring down the cost of housing for everyone, including the residents of the Upper West Side. So I'm proposing three basic tenants. We take the commercial real estate that's now vacant in Midtown, the financial district, and we rezone that. We use that for residential space. We take the basements and attics in all five boroughs, and we allow homeowners to turn those into rental units. It could bring more than 200,000 new units online. And we take all the undedicated parcels of land throughout the five boroughs, dedicate them to a community land trust, and work with nonprofit developers to build permanent low-income and affordable housing, which could bring more than 50,000 new units online. Here on the Upper West Side, we've got the second densest neighborhood in the entire country. So we just have fewer development opportunities. But where we have landmarked buildings, we want to make sure we're protecting those. There's a great example of the Mount Pleasant Baptist Church on 81st Street that is landmarked, but they took the inside and turned it into rental units, to split the difference between preservation and building more housing. And so I think that's a great model to lead us forward.
All right. Thank you very much, Jeffrey. Turning to a new issue. Maria Danzillo, please give a brief description of yourself for our vision impaired viewers, and then tell us what is your position on city financial support for the adaptive reuse of landmarked buildings?
Okay. My name is Maria Danzillo. I'm white. My pronouns are her. I'm wearing a navy blue sweater, and I have blue glasses and brown hair. I want to thank the Center at West Park and Landmarks West, West End Preservation Society, Historical District Council, and everyone for hosting this tonight, and it's good to see everyone. So just to go through, you know, the basic position that I hold on preservation, and then we could certainly talk about the specific question you asked. We have here on the Upper West Side some of the most beautiful buildings, you know, in the world, and people have chosen to live in this neighborhood because of our beautiful buildings. And I think as we go forward, we just need to have, you know, to me, a kind of a common sense approach to how we balance competing interests. I never want to see us diminish the importance of preservation for any goals related to housing that might make our preservation goals less important to a community. It's really important that we prioritize our preservation. In terms of the exact approach we want to take about helping buildings and how we approach that, you know, I do think there are tax incentives that we can provide to building owners when they undertake preservation. There are ways that if a building owner does go through a process of getting approval and has approval, and it's expensive to do that, we can certainly provide tax relief for that. So those are just some of the things that I think we can do to make it easier for our people in our community who have buildings that are in historic districts.
Thank you, Maria. Adding another wrinkle to the city's support of landmarked buildings, David, please give a description of yourself, and then tell us what is your position regarding financial relief of the burden that confronts many of the homeowners of historic properties? We've already heard the description, so.
I have, yes. So I support, I think it's an important issue, and I support a range of ways to help homeowners who face unreasonable burdens. I think it's extremely important that both that we preserve the nature of the buildings and also that people in our neighborhood are not at risk of losing their homes or become otherwise unreasonably burdened as a result. So tax incentives are certainly part of it, and I would be in favor of subsidies in some instances as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So we're going to go back to Sarah. Sarah, our community members have determined that zoning abuses and the potential for overscale development on Broadway is one of the biggest threats to preserving the streetscape and sense of place for our community. What is your position on those two issues?
Great, yeah. So I think it's a great question. Broadway is a key corridor in our district. It's one reason why I've put forth a plan for the commercial and the streetscape to revitalize Broadway. In terms of the buildings along the street, I think that, you know, we spoke in our previous preservation forum about the idea of rezoning, which doesn't mean an upzoning. It means just relooking at the zoning we have in place right now and making sure that it makes sense for the district. So I think, you know, given the question we just spoke about, the burdens of being in a historic district, I'm not sure that, and especially along a commercial corridor. I know that there are businesses who won't even look at a space in a historic district because of the extra burdens of running a business there, you know? So I'm not sure that making Broadway a historic district is necessarily the right move, but making sure that the zoning is, you know, the contextual zoning that we want for that corridor, I think would be a good solution to that, you know, so that we're not having these loopholes and these ways of people building these extremely high buildings that we don't want in the neighborhood. So I think that that would be a good balance for making sure that we're not creating more burdens on owners and on commercial properties.
Thank you, Sarah. Jeffrey, what are your thoughts on that same issue?
There we go. All right. So sorry, I forgot to introduce myself before. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a mixed race Asian man with black hair and brown eyes, wearing a blue shirt. I'm in alignment there. There might be some opportunities between 72nd and 110th Street for historic designation. Broadway is, it's one of the best boulevards in the entire country that rivals anything that they've got in Europe, and I want to keep it that way. But as Sarah was saying, you know, both 200 Amsterdam and the Exteil Building on West 66th Street took advantage of some loopholes, and they were able to do that because they were both as-of-right developments. So I want to make sure that we have our streets zoned so that when a developer comes in and tries to build an extra tall building, it's going to have to go through the Euler process to make sure that we get input from all of our community members. So that's where I stand.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jeffrey. Thank you very much. Gail, how is your position distinguished from that of Sarah and Jeffrey as they've been expressed?
I would say, you know, it's not that distinguished, but I would just say some specifics. That's why I live in a historic district, so I have no problem with the challenges. I don't think it's that much more expensive. I'm working with WEPs, as you know, West End Preservation. We were able to historic district, if that's a verb, West End Avenue. And I have not heard complaints, some, but nothing major in terms of extra costs. I'm a big supporter of historic districts, so I don't think they cost more. Second, part of Broadway issue is the retail. I was able, in the council, to get a bill. I'm the only council member anywhere that passed a retail bill, but it's mostly to focus on, I could do Amsterdam and Columbus. New stores can only be 40 feet long, and on Broadway, only the banks, 25 feet only. I wasn't able to get anything else. I would like to see more zoning of that neighborhood on Broadway because it had become a national chain, and I think that's not what we're looking for. But in terms of the building, first of all, we know that thanks to this community board, the area north of 96th Street up to 110th, or that general area, was downzoned after the Exteil Buildings were built. So that's a good thing, and those buildings cannot be further than what zoning currently exists. And I would say downzone. But I would say in general, the Broadway Buildings, A, are not built with any affordable housing, and they have absolutely no sense of place in many cases. So for those, what I call taxpayers that are left, I think we have to work on figuring out could there be another zoning, is a bit to the retail issues and to the fact that it has to have affordable housing. That might mean a 197A plan from community board, because that is how you do the planning with the community. So I would suggest that just for the Broadway corridor, and there could be other things that get involved. The atrocity is 96th and Broadway, where there is a building staying in the zoning, but only one affordable unit, which I think has outweighed this. And for that, a person's getting a slightly higher, very small increase in height, but it's outrageous. So that's the kind of building that we don't want.
Okay. Thank you, Gail. Maria, why don't you weigh in on this? Maria Danzillo?
Okay, so I agree with much of what has been said previously about the need to close loopholes and make sure that we are not inviting more tall towers to our neighborhood. I think of the building at 200 that just put apartments on the market for $40 million. And I looked at the views from that building from Central Park West and, I think, 63rd Street. And, you know, the way the building was positioned, it was really to take advantage of massive views, 360-degree views all over the neighborhood. And, you know, that building is causing a lot of shadows and a lot of unhappiness for the residents and people who live nearby. So, you know, I think we do need to close loopholes, do need to have a practical approach to how we go forward. What I don't want to see happen is that we, again, think of preservation as something that is fungible and that is not intrinsically important to the community. You know, I've seen people in the city who are developers celebrate when historic buildings are torn down. I've seen fights all over the city. I'm thinking of Elizabeth Street Gardens and South Street Seaport and other places where, you know, the fight is really about, well, you preservationists are really undermining our ability to move forward and build more housing. And I would like to say that I think it's time that we look at those conversations and reprioritize the importance of our historic buildings as really important to our sense of community. It's important for tourism. People love the Upper West Side. It's important to keep people here. It's really important that we have a sense of place and a sense of history and that we respect the past. So these are things that are really important to us.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you all for your well-considered answers. We're going to get back to some more in a second, but we're going to take an opportunity to pause for a moment and show you a great example of an adapted reuse for an historic building. As we've already mentioned, our own Center at West Park housed in the landmark, West Park Presbyterian Church at 86th Street and Amsterdam. Currently, we're presenting visual performances from our resident artists. So we're going to watch a quick excerpt of "Welcome to Imagination" by "Benvenuto Amazinacion" by Carmen Caseras Dance Action. Multimedia immersive performance inspired by Charlie Chaplin's "Modern Times", exploring themes of immigration and ecology. This piece was created through the Center at West Park's Artist in Residence Program and presented as part of the Spring 2021 season. So let's watch. All right. Welcome back. We hope that you enjoyed that brief introduction to the wonderful virtual performances that highlight the spring season. We're looking forward to a live at the Center fall season. More information is going to be available on the Center at West Park website in the coming weeks. All right, let's bring back Gail. And Gail, as a future city council member, where does preservation rank on your agenda?
Preservation ranks very high on my agenda. As I indicated, I certainly supported, I was the one that got the West Park Presbyterian Church to be landmarked, and I'm so excited about what the center has with the arts, and the same thing with the West End Avenue. And I live in a historic district, and when I developed the city council district office on 87th Street, that too is an historic district, and we conform to everything that the Landmarks Preservation Commission wanted. I think, you know, I've been spending a lot of time in Harlem. We're trying very hard there to get more historic districts. We're fighting with LPC about an abolition house and district in Harlem. I think that the way in which WEPs went about it is what needs to be done. We do a very extensive survey and then try to figure out what the research is, and then come up with a historic district. Individual landmarks, I am upset about the possibility of the church on, it's 92nd and Amsterdam. It's not landmarked. It should be, in my opinion. And I think there are other faith bases in the West Side need to get landmarked or need support. Example, St. Gregory's is now empty. The school is attached to Holy Name on 96th Street is now there. There may be some temporary uses, temporary schools, but the Catholic Church is not sure what to do with them. I have to say, I think I would focus on some of the faith-based buildings where there isn't a big congregation and see how we can work together. That's what I would do on the West Side. You know, borough-wide, city-wide, there are just lots of other opportunities, and there may be other parts of the district working with the community board that could benefit from a historic district. I do want to make it really clear that historic district owners do not end up paying a great deal more. That was a myth that I think has been said over and over again that I would totally disagree with as somebody who lives in one and has worked in one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Gail. Maria, what's your response to that? Maria, what's your response to that, that, that same question, please?
Sorry about that. Um, so uh on city council, I would make it a top priority to make sure that the, uh, our neighborhood, the unique uh, uh, character of the Upper West Side is preserved for us and for future generations. This would be a top priority of mine. Uh, it has been throughout my campaign, I've been very consistent in terms of my views on preservation and the importance of preservation. Um, I, you know, I do, I do understand that, um, you know, there are uh, 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 issues that have come up over the last uh couple of years around uh very difficult uh preservation decisions uh and waiting competing interests. And one of the things that I have brought to this campaign is a belief that we need to listen to all constituents and make sure that we're representing all points of view and really hearing people on their concerns. So um, you know, it's really, um, I'm, I'm, I'm forty-year resident of the Upper West Side. I chose to live here really primarily because it's such a beautiful neighborhood. I came here as a, a teenager and fell in love with the neighborhood. Um, and um, you know, my husband and I have been here for a really long time. We love everything about this neighborhood. So it would be my top priority at the same time, consistent with how we've run this campaign. And what's important to me, I am representing the Upper West Side. I am representing our community and hearing how the community feels about uh these issues is really important. I do also want to say in terms of affordable housing, I would always prioritize our community members' needs for affordable housing. And that means repairing existing housing, making sure we're preserving our existing stock of affordable housing, making sure we're renovating NICA and other uh parts of our community that have been uh, that have not been um uh treated properly over the last uh two decades or more. Um, so those are all things that we would have to do as we go forward. But preserving the unique and beautiful character of this neighborhood would be at the very top of, you know, my list of, of priorities for um a city council member representing probably, in my view, the most beautiful neighborhood in the world.
Thank you, Murphy. Jeffrey, you have expressed your support for landmarking houses of worship. Throughout District Six, many are financially distressed, I can attest. Um, what uh city uh slash public financial mechanism might you use to support the adaptive reuse of these buildings?
Sure, so uh from my understanding, uh, the, the Landmark Preservation Commission's Historic Preservation Grant Program awards funds to, to nonprofit organizations and eligible building owners to upgrade their facades. Uh, and so that's, I, I think that's the appropriate program there. Um, and they get funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Uh, and so we've got to make sure that that funding keeps going and where the city can step in and subsidize uh those programs, I would certainly be in favor of that. Um, our, our houses of worship uh were built with materials and techniques that we would never be able to afford to replicate today. So I want to make sure we hang on to them. Uh, they're some of the most beautiful buildings in our neighborhood. Uh, and it's, you know, it's, it's so, it's so cool to walk by a building that, uh, that either is a church or used to be a church and to, to see it still in use today, um, so that future generations can, can enjoy.
All right, thank you, thanks, Jeffrey. Um, David Gold, what are your thoughts on this same issue? Landmarking houses of worship and how to fi- financially assist.
Right on there. Um, I, I, I also support uh whatever support uh is necessary to allow uh existing uh buildings that have landmark status or deserve landmark status to be uh kept up and for the organizations, the religious organizations or uh for supporting uh adaptive reuse when that's appropriate. Um, I support a wide variety of ways of providing additional support. I think it's very important to the nature of the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you, David. Now we get to a very important part of this candidate's forum. What will our candidates uh be willing to commit to regarding preservation concerns of the District Six electorate as uh, as we have been able to, to glean from uh different people involved in the preservation issue and related issues? And so first, um, let me ask Gail. Uh, Gail, will you commit to working towards the removal of zoning abuses and close, closing the loopholes currently being exploited by some developers, often resulting in these overscale developments uh throughout our, our district?
Absolutely, yes, you've heard a lot about two hundred Amsterdam and the XL building on sixty-sixth street. There are air rights, there's this insane way in which the two hundred Amsterdam developers decided to, to merge the lots. We went to court, I was part of it, we were um amicus and we lost twice, actually. Um, and the issue is, is the city now, we're all trying to redo air rights so that they're more uh transparent and when they're sold, and also this lot craziness has got to stop. We've also been fighting the other issue, which um hasn't appeared here but elsewhere, which is the mechanicals and the issue of raising the uh, you know, the gym floors and so on. So that you end up with a taller building and absolutely for no reason whatsoever. Um, so the mechanicals have been counted in the craziest way. So what I'm trying to say is absolutely yes, but we always have to be kind of ahead of what the developers are thinking of in terms of issues. The mechanicals, the lot merger and the transfer of air whites and making them transparent have all been introduced into the council, I think, in terms of moving. They have to work with the City Planning Commission to get these things passed. And it's not easy with this particular administration. Those are the three of the areas. But I have to say, in addition to all of that, where is the affordable housing? So you end up with these tall buildings and no affordable housing. So there, it's more like, those are problems, but the real issue is if you're going to have a building of any size, that's even within the zoning context, thirty stories, we've got to include in a crisis affordable housing. Now, that could end up uh in, you know, figuring out how to change MIH. It could be a situation of changing the way the vouchers are counted, but it, and, and all the whole taking is issue. I keep going back to that. Um, that's where the, the rubber hits the road. Now, if we're talking about faith-based, I have to say, um, I know in St. Paul and St. Andrew, and your wonderful building, it's been challenging uh because of the cost of keeping the building going. I would like to see government, right now, government's not allowed to give you money unless there's a separate uh 501(c)(3) and a condo, as you know, you were the start of that amazing process to use government money in the best possible way. So that needs to be thought of. Like I said, there are probably other faith-based that I am not aware of in the sixth council district that as we sit here, they're trying to think of how they could sell to the highest developer uh who will pay the most. We've got, I would say that should be our focus for right now. We'll be looking at the faith-based and see how we can continue them in repurposing or uh affordable housing. Uh, the, what, the one um Mount Pleasant is a great example. I was very involved with the pastor there, but it is a hundred percent condos and it's not affordable. He's done a great reuse of his building, I want to thank him. He almost did something else, but he did the right thing, but there's no affordable in that particular building. So we need reuse, we need affordable, we've got to find government a way to get in on that and figure out how you go um, you get around, I don't think that's the right word, some kind of separation of church and state. That's a hard.
Okay, right, yes, thank you, Gail. Sarah, uh, what is your position on this issue? And will you commute, commit to uh removal of these zoning abuses? Uh, what's, uh, what will your policy be?
Yeah, thank you, um, definitely. I agree with um pretty much everything Gail said. Um, I know that Linda Rosenthal, our assembly member, um, is working on the mechanical voids issue at the state level. So I think we have to work together with our state representatives and these loopholes and the best way to close them. Um, I wanted to take a second because I feel like I missed a couple of questions. Um, so I do want to say, I actually live right across the street from uh the Center at West Park, and I love it. And I have a friend who dances there, I've been to performances there, it's amazing. So I think the adaptive reuse is really important. Another adaptive reuse I'm very excited about is the children's museum. Um, you know, we went, when my kids were littler, we went to the children's museum all the time. I don't want to lose that from the neighborhood. And I think, you know, an adaptive reuse of the church there is a great way to keep the, the building there and keep the museum in the neighborhood. So I think, um, there's a lot of really exciting possibilities with adaptive reuse and, and we should very much be focusing that, on that. As Gail mentioned, there's, there is kind of some First Amendment issues with financial support if it's still going to be a faith-based institution. But um, I think we can get creative and, you know, and solve these problems. Um, and then uh, yeah, okay, I guess that, I just wanted to address that because I don't think I got to answer that question, um, but.
Not everybody's getting a request because of time.
I like that question. But yes, um, but, but in terms of the loopholes, uh, you know, I, I think that's why I said before in terms of the rezoning, so that we, we get, we cut off these loopholes at the knee, you know, and say as a community what we want, and then we're all on the same page, and then we, we move forward from there. Um, but you know, let's, yeah, let's, let's make sure we're doing this all straightforward and, and no more of these loopholes, for sure.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Um, Jeffrey, will you commit to seeking protection of District Six at-risk buildings that were uh removed from the uh West End Avenue Historic District? Are you aware of that situation and uh would you commit to uh addressing that? And or correct that where appropriate?
Yes, I, I will, I want to make, uh, I want to make sure we, we get those buildings back into the historic district. Um, as, as others were saying, I, we're saying, I think we need a comprehensive review of uh our zoning on the Upper West Side to make sure that uh developers can't take advantage of these as-of-right uh uh buildings. Uh, both two hundred West and uh the XL building on West sixty-six are using these loopholes, either the, the extra-tall HVAC floors or these gerrymandered uh air, air rights. So uh, we've got to make sure we are, are zoning our, our, uh, our neighborhood correctly and closing these loopholes to, to protect these areas.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Um, Marie, uh, what's your position then on District Six at-risk historic buildings?
Uh, yes, I, I agree uh Jeffrey on uh that, I would commit to that. I do want to just respond to something Gail said before about uh closing loopholes. And um, you know, I am not in favor of, I am completely in favor of closing loopholes, but I don't want to uh connect the closing of loopholes or open up the possibility that we would allow loopholes if, for example, a tall tower was built that had a, an entire building of, of so-called affordable housing, which by the way, is a term that we haven't really defined with any clarity. So I just want to, to respond to that particular point because I think it's important to say that if you close a loophole, that means you close a loophole. It doesn't mean you close a loophole, but if an entire building is made up of whatever we're defining as affordable housing, that somehow or another um, uh, the, 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 the loophole uh is no longer closed. It is actually an open loophole. So I am in favor of closing loopholes so that we don't have buildings that are for an already second-most-dense neighborhood in the United States that is causing, you know, that, that, that reduces the quality of life for people in the neighborhood and brings all kinds of environmental, you know, issues with our transit systems, our subway systems, um, so many things. If we are going to look at closing loopholes, we need to do that in uh, in a, you know, consistently and not say, well, it's closed for this purpose, but it's not closed for that purpose. So as, go through this discussion of what I would commit to, I would commit to things that are very clearly laid out. Thank you.
And including the uh at-risk historic buildings, yes?
Yes, that is right.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so, uh, David, will you commit to holding regular meetings in your o- office at the District Six uh of community stakeholders? And specifically include in all of that uh preservation and neighborhood groups with a uh focus on preservation and development issues? Is that enough of a priority for, once we're allowed to meet in small spaces again?
In an office, yes. Uh, yes, I, I absolutely uh commit to it. And uh, and, and if we're ever in another awful situation where hopefully not for very long like this, but uh I, I also commit to doing it like this if we can't meet in an office. So yes, regular meetings, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, David. Um, Sarah, back to you. Will you commit to supporting future historic designations within District Six? That's appropriate. And if so, what, uh, any specific buildings or streets come to mind that you would like to see designated?
Uh, sure, um, I, I would support it on a case-by-case basis. You know, we'd have to look at it and see, um, nothing specific comes to mind. I'd have to um probably think a little bit more about that. I want to take this chance actually to um highlight something Gail said, I think, towards the beginning and that I agree with, which is that um, if you look at the map of historic designations around the city, um, it's ver- it's very unequal. Um, and I think that there are a lot of, you know, historically black neighborhoods, um, areas where there's other history in the city that would really benefit from historic designation. Um, so I would like to see the Landmarks Preservation Commission do a bit more of that as well. Um, I think there's so much history in our city uh that we do need to preserve. Um, so you know, I, I think that's something I would push.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Um, finally, Gail, uh, the same question to you. Are there historic designations, are there buildings, are there streets that, that come to mind that should be looked at in this?
Certainly on the historic, whoops. Certainly on the historic designations, I would love to see more of the faith-based, but I know may not be what uh some of the faith-based leaders would like, I understand that. Uh, as long as it comes with support, which we have talked about and we need to extend. So that would be specific. In terms of uh streets, I mean, there's a couple of ways of looking at that. I do think that the community board and black associations and civic groups need to work together. I don't want to pick one in particular, but I think that we certainly have uh quite a few individual landmarks that we should be in, uh, one proposal, so the Landmark Preservation Commission, that we should be making. And I start with the faith-based, but there are probably other places um that need to get uh to be a historic district. It, it is not said publicly because it's always a, a no-no of perhaps in the historic and landmarked world. But if you're going to work on developments, you sometimes do say, okay, let's, on this as a historic district and then figure out from there, let's work and plan. Should this be historic district? Should we work on zoning? How should we preserve our neighborhood that also brings in affordable housing? And that's really the question that you started with, and it's the hardest question. Um, it was very frustrating. I know in some instances where you see Austin, ugly building going up with no affordable housing uh within the zoning, and yet we get nothing out of it that has relevance or support for the neighborhood. So that's really the question. So I think that's the kind of plan that a one ninety-seven A could address.
Thank you, Gail. And thank you to everybody, all our candidates and uh especially to our audience. We're, we're lucky in this district to have a slate of candidates like this to choose from. And because of ranked choice voting, you don't have to pick just one. Just please spend a minute ahead of time and figure out like how to do ranked choice voting so that your vote counts. Uh, you can vote for one, two, three, four, or five, uh, and you know, and the rest of it. So please spend a minute to, to, to get that straight. Uh, it's a, but it's a great, a great thing, uh, I think. Um, a good, good change in our uh democracy here in New York City. Okay, um, we hope that this forum has been helpful in that process of deciding which candidate or which candidates would be best for our, our community. And so um, we're grateful for the time of, of all our candidates. We're grateful for the time of each member of the audience who took an hour tonight to, to try to further along their uh, your own discernment process. What's best for our community? Eric?
Thank you so much, Kay. I want to specifically thank you for uh leading us through this discussion tonight. It's been informative and an evocative conversation. And I thank all of our, our candidates for being here and being a part of this. It's been most enlightening and I look forward to this. For our audience, I want you to know that the most important thing, if we can't leave you with anything else, the most important thing for each of us to do is to go out and vote on June twenty-second. Early voting is also available from June twelfth through June twentieth. So go to www.votennyc for more details. Once again, we thank you, we thank all of our community. Once again, we thank you. We thank all of our community partners for this event and we wish you a good evening. And Kay, I turn it over to you for the final closing.
Now, as preachers, you and I, when somebody tells us to, you know, close something out, you know, we're going to just go to prayer, but I'm not going to do that. I, but we do want to thank our, our co-sponsors for making this happen and for their continued support as together we all work together to make District Six the gem of the Upper West Side. Let's thank especially the Center at West Park for hosting this and all of our community partners. And we hope everybody has a good and safe week. Thank you.